Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone.
That is some wicked echo.
Sorry, I forgot to hit the mute. Okay. I think we may have everybody but Joe.
All right, well, it's 5:32, so let's go ahead and get started. We have two items on the agenda. The first for public discussion is the continued discussion regarding a possible general obligation bond election to include an economic stimulus recovery package. So this piece of the package is what we'll be focusing on tonight to help guide us through the decision-making and also to get the feedback directly from EDAB. We've invited Mr. Chuck Thompson to join us, and I thought he could, unless staff had another presentation first, I thought it'd be great to dive in and hear what he had to say about the EDAB meeting and the recommendations. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, glad to be invited. I might just start off by saying that the members of the EDAB committee met a couple of weeks ago and had quite a long conversation about the entire process of some sort of an economic stimulation package of some sort. And Darrell Pyle and Catherine Walker guided us through that. We heard a result of a survey that was performed by the city as it related to impact from the PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, the emergency loan program from the SBA, and I think through Sarah Kaplan's office. That survey was, the information was gathered and shared with the committee. Also, in attendance at that committee meeting, which was Zoom, by the way, was County Commissioner Derry Stacey. And as you may know, most of the federal support money that's coming into the states comes to the state government or through counties at this point in time. And so Darrell Pyle, City Manager, and County Commissioner Derry Stacey had a lot of information to share as it related to the kinds of programs that were thought to be available currently through the CARES Act. And I think there's more information that will be discussed about that. So I'd say the EDAB committee took the information in, some of the dialogue, which I'm sure Ms. Hall may or may not have the minutes ready yet, I don't know for sure about that, but she's amazing at doing that, by the way. But I do think that the committee was looking for more information before making any kind of a recommendation. And so I know that Darrell Pyle and Commissioner Stacey were to meet and have, in fact, had a meeting. There's a lot of information that's come up about the things that the Paycheck Protection Program did and didn't do, as well as the other funding that's come through the Treasury Department and through the SBA. So I think, I would say, the EDAB Committee, Economic Development Advisory Board, is looking for our next update from the information that's been gathered through those processes. And I've been in some email traffic today with the City Manager as it relates to the Economic Development Authority, which, as you may know, is headquartered in Austin. But there are some people that have revolving loan funds, which was some of the conversations that Catherine Walker had had, is if we were to put together some sort of an incentive process through something that would be included in a bond issue, then maybe the desire would be to have those funds be more lent than granted away, and that could create some sort of a revolving fund so that the money would be looked at as more of an investment that would be repaid over time in some process, or some of it forgiven, some of it not. And I think those details are still being discussed and are still yet to be worked out. So I think the committee is aware that time is of the essence with making decisions about whether or not a package of this sort would or should or could be a part of the upcoming bond package. And so I wish we had more to report, Madam Mayor, but that's really where EDAB sits today. And so it might be worthwhile to let the City Manager talk more about his conversations with the county and what he's found and what the information that will be presented to the next EDAB committee might contain. So having said that, City Manager and I talked earlier today a little bit about this, and so I think he's prepared to fill in some of the blanks, if that's okay with you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Thompson before we turn it over to City Manager Pyle?
Seeing none, all right.
And Mayor, he's going to be talking loudly. He's in here with me, so he's going to try to pick up through my speaker. He's having trouble connecting, so.
Thank you, Your Honor, and hopefully you can hear me. During the EDAB committee's meeting, the Vice Chair of the committee, Dr. Holmes, shared with us an enlightening thought as it related to the best mechanism to provide locally-administered funds for small business recovery. And in his wisdom, he indicated that we all needed to keep in sight the fact that the federal government had moved to put $2 trillion into the economy for small business assistance, recognizing that part of that money was distributed through the SBA and through local banks, and that was what the Payroll Protection Program funding was a large part of. Dr. Holmes did repeat on a couple of different instances throughout the EDAB meeting, we're talking about $2 trillion in federal money, and that he recommended we at least put forth some effort in going after those dollars, what dollars might be available to a city government to establish funding for such a program as opposed to seeking local voter approval. We've talked about, and we've all heard in many conversations, the subject of CARES Act money. And what we have learned is the federal government called multiple programs CARES Act, or within the CARES Act, they set out several buckets of money with very specific strings attached. So when we start a conversation and talk about CARES Act, we need to clarify among ourselves, okay, which bucket of money are we referring to? The first several communications we've received through federal sources related to CARES Act were primarily focused on the cities and counties' ability to submit costs incurred in dealing with COVID-19 for cost recovery. And for us, that means our purchase of personal protective equipment, that means costs incurred for additional sanitation and decontamination efforts, even some overtime that may have been incurred specifically related to addressing the pandemic. It did not address anything related to business recovery or economic development recovery, and it did not address anything related to budget shortfalls for state, city, or county governments related to COVID-19. Recently, through the Federal Economic Development Administration, they identified CARES Act money with several different programs. And I'll ask the city clerk to share the screen. COVID, it talks about CARES Act, and it's the one with a picture of the giant COVID-19 molecule behind it. So we sent you an email that had some attachments to it, and the one we'll put up on a screen share here in just a second was the EDA bucket of money that will be administered regionally, and our region is the state of Oklahoma and a part of northern Texas. And we were able to make contact with our representative lady named Jessica. She said her revolving loan program coordinator, a lady named Ladonna, was gracious enough to schedule a conference call with staff tomorrow morning to see if an application through the EDA to access CARES Act funding could provide us the same program latitude that council had envisioned to provide access to capital for our small business recovery program. This is the piece that we believe Dr. Holmes was referring to in his statements about, you know, we got to go explore all the federal dollars available first. In my conversation with Commissioner Stacey on the subject, the county of Cleveland had on hand a consultant that is going to help them assemble a grant application to put their hands on some of the EDA CARES Act money for small business recovery. There was an opportunity to work cooperatively with Cleveland County on such an application, or we could do an application independent. We are eligible applicants to put our hands on this type of money, and our call tomorrow with Ladonna out of the Austin, Texas, office should allow us to put our grant application parameters together. So this information is evolving fairly rapidly. We do think there is an opportunity, although this is truly not a bird in the hand, this is a bird in the bush, you know, still out there to be determined if an application from the city of Norman for the program as we propose would be competitive and would receive funding. And perhaps there is a two-pronged approach that we could start a path for EDA application funding while a question is posed to the voters. If the voters were to approve the local measure and we successfully acquired EDA funding, we simply wouldn't issue the debt on the local funding for small business recovery, or council could choose to do one or the other. So I think we've gathered enough information to recognize there are federal dollars out there. One of the programs under this particular bucket of money is to fund revolving loan programs, which was a portion of what the city council was hoping to accomplish in the conversation. So we will know more tomorrow, and I think as we plan on the polling that would go out starting next week, we believe, on the ballot measures, we should have information back from the EDA as well as polling information in our hands within the next two and a half weeks is the goal, to give council as much information as possible. After our EDA conversation tomorrow, staff is proposing through the Chairman of EDAB to bring the group back and share with them what we've learned through the EDA and see if they have some additional recommendations or suggestions to make to council when we've got that information in hand. Happy to answer any questions. We also have our survey that Ms. Kaplan went over with, with council and EDAB at our last meeting, if there are any questions specific to the need. When we asked the 382 respondents to the survey, what was your greatest need, 58% of the respondents said access to capital.
We do have a couple of questions, Mayor. Councilmember Bearman.
Yes, my question, it looks like, from the information in the CARES Act flyer that you kind of briefly went over, it looks like they are preparing fairly quickly to start issuing or approving these grant applications. It looks like they started taking them on May 7th, and, you know, they said they wanted to get it out as expeditiously as possible. And I know from our experience applying for the PPP and the SBA EIDL loans, it took approximately 45 days from the time our application was submitted until the first EIDL dollars started coming through. And so it sounds like to me that any grant we were able to get from the CARES Act for this purpose would probably arrive faster than bond money would. Does that sound like an accurate assessment?
I would agree with that statement that access to these dollars could be available sooner than voter-approved geobond and then geobond issuance.
Okay, so to me, that sounds promising. You know, my concern about waiting till November for any kind of economic assistance for businesses that weren't able to get federal assistance is that November might be too late. It also might be in the midst of a second wave or a third wave, God forbid. So, but my big kind of caveat with this is that $1.5 billion sounds like a lot, but I'm sure there's going to be a lot of applications. And so do we have any idea yet, or is this something we'll find out tomorrow, what the likelihood is of getting upwards of $5 million from this kind of grant application?
Yes, we should have that information tomorrow, and I'll be happy to prepare an email summary to the council as a follow-up to that conversation and share with you all the parameters that Ladonna from the federal EDA office is able to share with us. And we know that out of the first tranche of CARES Act money, this $1.5 billion EDA program was established along with funding for payroll protection program loans. And I have a feeling as the second round of CARES Act money is approved by the legislature, they will add funding to the existing programs that, you know, have already been fully subscribed to because they recognize the systems are already in place, the infrastructure already exists to distribute those funds. So I think that's positive. Councilmember Carter also shared with us what the House of Representatives passed in terms of a $3 trillion bucket of money under CARES Act going forward that did include things like, you know, budget stabilization for city and county governments and other opportunities in there for business recovery. So we know the funding, we're still on the first half of the federal dollars being distributed, and it does appear that there is much more in the hopper. So we'll be watching and monitoring all those as well. We will also be preparing a resolution for council's consideration on the next agenda to support additional federal stimulus funding for, you know, budget recovery as well as business recovery.
Great, I appreciate that. And this kind of led me to a quick clarification. So is this, is this funding from the, I guess, out of the three stimulus packages that have passed from the first one?
I believe this is still the first $2 trillion tranche. That is my understanding, and I'll see what the EDA can share with us if they recognize that this is from the first $2 trillion. And we know they were talking in total upwards of $7 trillion to come out of the federal government.
Okay, well, I really appreciate that. To me, this sounds really promising, and, you know, I really would like us to pursue it. It sounds like timelines and funding amounts are still up in the air to the point where I certainly don't want to let go of the possibility of a local funding opportunity because I think, I think we do need probably at least $5 million. So, you know, I think kind of proceeding with both for now is probably appropriate, but I really, really, really like the thought of this so that we're not increasing the amount of money that we're taking out of everyone's pockets to put back into a few. So that's been the part that's given me the most heartburn about this, is asking people to dip into their own wallets to, you know, help support businesses, which I know everyone wants to do, it just, you know, seems like, seems like a sting either way, either way we look at it. So I like the, I like the idea of using federal tax dollars for this purpose as opposed to our local property tax dollars. So I think this sounds really promising. Thanks for answering the questions.
Just a follow-up to Councilmember Bearman's comments, we were able to communicate with Oklahoma City and their $5.5 million program that they had on hand through MAPS program. They received 600 applications totaling $20 million in requests in a three-week period. So obviously, several of those applicants will be disappointed because those dollars were substantially oversubscribed in very short order, but if that gives you any indication as to what the need was, all the businesses in Oklahoma City had the same access to SBA lending and personal or payroll protection programs that Norman businesses had, and the demand was an additional $20 million locally.
Apologies, one quick clarification on that. Did Oklahoma City have any kind of restrictions against businesses that have received federal funding applying for their local funding?
Just so that I can... Did not appear so, and we just got a real brief summary as to what the application period looked like. It was pretty broadly defined as to who could apply, and I don't think they knew how big the demand was going to be when it started. I think they, they closed down the application period once they recognized the demand was far more than they had funding available. So those who were quick got in the hopper, and I'm sure there would, there would have been additional applications filed had they not closed the filing period.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Councilmember Wilson.
Hey, y'all. I just want to make sure, and you might have said this, Mr. Pyle, but I want to make sure that our ballot language reflects that possibility so that, you know, the trust of the voters is there, that if we get federal dollars that can fund this program, we will not be dipping into those bond dollars, if that makes sense. Have we talked about who would administer this program, no matter where the dollars come from?
We just brushed the subject with EDAB in terms of recognizing the volume that came through OKC. Is there a system that already exists that can handle that kind of volume? We do loan applications through community development block grant for first-time homebuyer assistance and home rehab, but the volume isn't anywhere near what we could expect through small business recovery lending. So that question is yet to be answered in terms of the appropriate entity to facilitate. It's probably a little too much to ask of the EDAB committee members to evaluate. I mean, even if we took our population, if it was 150 applications we received, that would be a lot of paperwork to wade through for your EDAB board potentially. So yet to be determined, and a clear, concise conclusion on how they would be processed has not been determined. We did learn that Tulsa also put together a loan program for small business recovery. So we do believe that there are a lot of lessons to be learned. OKC told us, they actually signed an agreement with a local bank. OKC put together the application forms with all of the criteria, and a local bank processed all those loans in accordance with their council's parameters, and the bank did it for free. So it was, you know, a situation where OKC didn't even staff up to administer the application process.
That's, I think that would probably be the best use of our community partners as well. I know that that will probably be problematic or heartburn for some people in the community, but I think people that have experience, professionals in this area are going to be best. So I want to throw out, though, maybe Chuck, just a feather in your cap to take back to the EDAB folks, is that I would really like to see this kind of a ranking system because there's not going to be enough money for everybody, no matter where it comes from. And I would like to see, you know, minority-owned be more points. If you've already received federal dollars, you know, those are demerits in some capacity. And then I would like to see some caps so that there's more, you know, folks that get a little bit of something. And then I have one more question, Darrell, for you, that, do you have any indicators as to what the grant increments might be? Like, are they, are you applying as a municipality for $1 million, or 10, or 20, or is there, or is it just you put in what you want? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, we should get the loan or grant parameters from the EDA tomorrow morning in our, in our phone call with Ladonna. Our conversation will start at $5 million as what we think our initial demand would be by our business community, recognizing a $20 million demand with our neighbors to the north. So that's where we'll start the conversation, and we'll see how quickly she either ends that line of thought at a $5 million number, but we should know those limitations tomorrow.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Councilmember Patron had her hand up next.
Hi, thank you so much for this presentation, and I was, had the same questions or roundabout as Councilmember Wilson did about who would disperse the federal funds to each individual business applicant. Is it your understanding, Mr. Pyle, that the feds don't have any parameters on that at all either? It's just kind of, OKC just did?
The OKC folks had tons of flexibility because it was local dollars. The feds will give us parameters, limitations, I'm sure. We may get to set some local rules in terms of caps per application, whether it's a $10,000 maximum request or a $50,000 maximum request. I think the federal government appears to be favorable because they have an entire category on funding revolving loan programs. So I think they see the long-term benefit by being able to turn that loan grant over multiple times to support businesses, you know, into perpetuity minus defaults. So we'll have hoops to jump through and some structure to follow. I'm sure there would be reporting required on behalf of the city of Norman back to the federal government on an annual basis, but we're good at that. We do that with community development block grant funding annually now. So those are rules and regulations that we're not afraid of, and we've been in that environment for a number of years.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind asking for some clarification on that tomorrow?
Absolutely.
The other thought that came to me while we were having this discussion is that if there are other programs available for, say, veteran-owned businesses, for example, that's just one example, that perhaps the CARES Act or the EDA money or some other part of it has already some dollars out there that, you know, are different business owner types don't know that they can access. And if we can be a conduit for that as well, and would it come out of our EDA allotment, those kinds of questions, I think, would be really helpful. And I also echo Councilmember Wilson's sentiments on making sure that minority-owned, disability community, business-owned, whatever, you know, that the people in our community that really have a difficulty accessing these dollars on their own because they're not the 600 quickest to turn their application in, they don't have that kind of support network. That usually means you're well-funded. So it seems to me that the less well-funded business owners are really in dire straits. So anyway, I'm really interested to hear what you learn tomorrow. I'm much more supportive of federal dollars than I am dipping into local dollars. So if we find out tomorrow that we would be able to have this funded before we would even be sending this to a vote of the people, I would say there's no real reason to even send this to a vote of the people because you're sending them large bond requests as it is outside of this one. So you risk losing all of the questions, the more that you send. So.
Councilmember Petron, you, you made a statement that, that opened a line of thought in my mind. And that is the, the conversation with our EDA staff person to say that maybe there are multiple applications that could be filed on behalf of the city of Norman. So we'll dig into how their program is set up. But that thought hadn't occurred until you, you outlined, you know, the veteran owned businesses, et cetera. And they may have buckets that make us more competitive in certain programs than others. So we're going to want to hit that with the broadest approach possible so we can maximize the return. And we recognize that every dollar the federal EDA gives out, those are tax dollars that Norman residents paid as part of their, you know, annual giving to the federal government. So we want to make sure we can do our level best to get our fair share back to the businesses here in Norman.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you.
You'll pour.
Hey, I believe Councilmember Beerman had another question and then moving on to Councilmember Hall after that.
I'm going to make it fast. I did get a chance to quick jump onto the Tulsa website. I was, I didn't know that they had started a program themselves. And one of the things I liked about how they structured it is they also had a limit on the number of employees that a business could have to apply for this program. I think that that's appropriate for us to consider. I mean, maybe we end up with a different number than 50, which is what Tulsa ended up at. But I think that that's an appropriate thing to think about. And also I, I just have to put it out there that I can't, I can't support a program that is not administered by the city in such a way that it is subject to open records requests and, you know, the full package of information that has to do with the thought process and how these grants are, or loans are ranked if we decide to do that, or how we've decided which ones receive the, receive money and which don't. If that means that there's cost associated with that, let's build that into the program. If this is going to be something that is a long-term revolving program, I really think it should be administered by the city. And if that means figuring out a way to structure the program in such a way that it funds a, you know, our owner to do it, I think that that's appropriate. But I really think that we need to, we need to be crystal clear and as much sunlight possible on this program and make sure that if we do use a community partner to help us work through this, that it is still subject to open records requests so that anyone can see how this program is administered. And I don't care if that's, if it's federally funded or locally funded, it's still our tax dollars at work. And so I think it's appropriate that we structure it in such a way that we can provide that information.
Your honor, I do believe that it will be mandatory through the EDA that transparency is, is first and foremost in what we are required to maintain. So what we would probably do, and this is just the way I envision it working through with federal dollars, that we, our, our loan parameters would be approved by our representative at the EDA. And then we would, even if we used one of our community partners to help us move volumes of paperwork, we would all be playing off the same playbook and then we would all report back to the federal government what the outcomes were. They would know the criteria, they would be able to see the rankings and it would be done in such a way. And I know some of the other programs that depending on the application, we don't want to deter somebody from potentially applying for fear that their financial statements might wind up on the front page of the newspaper. If a business were to apply and they say, yeah, my, my finances don't look real good, that they, you know, it might not be good for business if that were to become public. So there must be parameters already in place through the federal government where just because you've applied for an SBA loan or an EDA loan, that doesn't necessarily mean your tax returns become public record. But we will be able to follow that. And I'm sure transparency in, in process is going to be priority one.
I really appreciate that. I only want my tax returns to be public if I run for president. If not, then there is no reason for anyone else to see them. But I would hope that we would structure a similar program with similar transparency, even if we were using local taxpayer dollars as well. I think that that's, that's paramount in order to ensure that we're managing this program properly and that people know that we're not just, again, giving it to the first, first and fastest fingers that can submit their application. So I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Councilmember Hall.
Okay. I, I, you've touched on some of the things that I was going to discuss, Councilmember Beerman, and I agree with the comments that you just made. I took a little time to look around to at other municipalities and what they're doing. And it, it did jump out at me with Oklahoma City too, I guess as well as Tulsa, that they did have some restrictions on the number of employees. So for their cash incentive program, it was less than 15 full-time equivalent employees. And for the loan program, it was less than 50. And I like that approach to really concentrate on those small, small businesses that have a small number of employees. So interested in pursuing that if possible. Also, if we do a revolving loan program, I think this kind of takes care of it. But I want to make sure that we really avoid any kind of first, first come, first served and that applications can all be considered equally before we start making decisions on if we have to divide up a pie that's too small, that everyone has an opportunity to participate and they understand how to, how to do it. So that, that's really important to me too. I also am interested in the idea of using some ranking points and giving points to, for certain things like they haven't gotten any other kind of assistance, that they, they, they're weighted to their advantage for not having any other option, or if it's a minority business, or just all of those businesses that have had struggles and challenges competing in the environment that they've had to compete in. And I want to make sure that we think about the ways to weight those kinds of things on their application form. So.
Councilmember Hall, you, you brought up a point that it just jarred a memory from our, our conversation with our EDAB board. And if Mr. Thompson's still available, we talked a little bit about industry segments and whether or not certain industries were precluded from applying for payroll protection funding. And Mr. Thompson, if you can share with council, as one of those SBA lenders that, that your bank was able to take several applicants successfully through the process, when it comes to questions about, well, tell me about your industry specific and whether or not any industries were excluded from applying for those dollars.
Thank you. The paycheck protection program deserves a little bit of explanation because it's truly that. It was to, it was to protect the employee's paycheck. So that program wasn't designed to enrich or, or take care of the employer. It was to move money through the employer to the employees. And so it was, the eligibility was established by the type of entity. So it could be a, it could be a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, it could be an LLC, C corp, S corp. So there was no limitation on the kind of industry that was involved, just a limitation on the, on the tax structure. So for example, a 501(c)(6) is a membership organization. And so there were questions about churches, other things like that. So that, and clarification, the SBA allowed any kind of a not-for-profit corporation to benefit from the, the PPP program. However, 501(c)(6) organizations were not allowed, as well as some other kinds of, of companies. So a 501(c)(6) organization would be, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, our own Convention and Visitors Bureau is the 501(c)(6). And so, so those were not allowed to participate. I'm aware, I'm, I'm on a team of people that are discussing the, the next round of funding that's in the upcoming, well, hopefully the upcoming bill. I think there are a lot of details to work out there. But I do believe that some of those legal entities that were not eligible in the first round will be eligible in the second round, primarily membership organizations. And I think it's important, as of last Friday, there's still $100 billion left in the paycheck protection program. And so we've, I know local community banks have been trying the best we can to get the word out that there's still money available. The program for self-employed people, and that's sole proprietorships, individuals with 1099, people working for their company. So, so there's still availability of funds in the PPP program, the direct loans, the disaster recovery loans directed from the SBA. Those are still working their way through the system. And so, so we've, as just a single bank in the process, we've seen applications, you know, fall to a trickle just because I think everybody that's felt like that was going to fit them has worked their way through the system. And so, so I'd want to say to anyone who thinks they may be eligible, call your local banker and talk about it. Because there's still, still, like I said, over $100 billion of funds available. So if you think about the PPP and the EIDL programs are dedicated towards getting money through the employer for paycheck protection is the name of the program. We might have an opportunity to think about funds that the city of Norman might want to either, either ask for from the EDA to administer or work in some other fashion that would go directly to small, the small businesses themselves. We saw in the, in the survey that, that Sarah Kaplan presented that the largest answer was, I need capital for my business, either a loan or invested capital in my business that I can use to pay other bills, maybe besides just payroll, or buy raw materials, or buy inventory, or support my sales cycle. And I think some of that was missed in the effort to try to get as much money through businesses to their employees to keep the paychecks coming. And so, so as we'd be, as EDAB continues to talk about, you know, what is it that we in Norman can do to have the biggest impact on businesses that were somehow not under the umbrella of the CARES Act so far? Or under PPP, I think would include entrepreneurs. You, you had to be in business for a while before the February date. So some of our newest businesses are not eligible for PPP. So like Council, Councilmember Beerman talked about, and the rest of you talked about, coming up with, you know, some criteria that fill in the blanks that were missed by some of the CARES Act. And I think that's what the funds to the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, is more focused towards supporting businesses, business owners and employers than the PPP program, which was designed to continue paychecks. And so that, that would be something for us to continue to consider as we look at, you know, what money is available and then what can the city of Norman and under our purview do? That would be unique to the needs of our local business community, not just the employees.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. I also just wanted to thank all of you that have put all of your time and energy into this. And I'm really encouraged to see what kind of information you glean tomorrow on that conference call and fully support pursuing every possible dollar that we might be eligible for. And, and just really optimistic that this may be another good avenue for us to pursue. So thank you for all of the work that you've put into that. And I had, I lost it, lost my last question. So if I think of it, I'll, I'll come back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Hallman is next.
Okay, thank you. Most of my questions have already been asked and answered actually, but I do have two of them here, I think. So when it comes to criteria, rating criteria for what type of businesses might be able to get, get these funds, I wasn't sure if one of those would be how long a business might have been around. I know the first few years of a new business can be very difficult to get through. But I also know that being a long time business doesn't necessarily mean that you're, you know, swimming in cash or anything either. So I don't know if it would be appropriate to have that to be part of rating that, you know, if a business is less than five years old, they might have some preference. Because maybe those are the ones struggling to stay open or maybe, maybe they're the most at risk of not reopening. I'm not sure. But again, I could also see where long time businesses, people would be in the community, I think would want to do whatever we can to make sure we don't lose businesses that we've all known to be here for a long time as well. So that's just something that I thought of as we were discussing here, that we might want to think about. And then also another question that came up based on Chuck's comments that Manager Pyle might be able to talk about is, you know, we all know the city of Norman runs on sales tax revenue. And we know that most of the expenses of the city are from employees, salaries, benefits, those things. I know we haven't had to do layoffs or anything like that yet. Hopefully we won't have to, but I think we all are expecting that sales tax revenue may be having some trouble and we may have to make some decisions over the next few months to a year. And I don't know, is it, would it be possible for the city of Norman to apply for paycheck protection funds to, to make up for what we think we might lose in sales tax revenue, which is how we pay for our employees? So I think indirectly or directly, we may have employee related issues that are due to COVID-19 when it comes to city staffing levels. So I don't know if that's something that would be possible as well.
Your honor, I'll tell you, that was very thought provoking. The first concept about business longevity, through the survey, we did learn that the lion's share of respondents, 382 respondents to the survey, have been in business for a good long time. So you do see that business stability here in Norman. So when we think about it, from a lender's perspective, in this particular case, that, yeah, the longer you're in business, probably the greater likelihood you will continue to stay in business. And we know that most businesses, when they fail, they do fail within the first couple of years. So we think about the, the default criteria. I will, and I made notes based on your comments, to confirm tomorrow, in such a revolving loan program funded with EDA dollars, we know that when we do loans through community development block grant for first time homebuyers, on occasion, they default. And it maybe hurts a little less when it's not local tax dollars that are lost in such a loan transaction, but federal dollars, and the federal government does recognize that there will be a percentage of those dollars that do get lost because businesses fail for multiple reasons. But I'll make sure we clarify that criteria tomorrow. The payroll protection program concept for local governments. I had a conversation with the city manager of Oklahoma City this afternoon, talking about sales tax losses. And their most recent check was substantially lighter than I would have anticipated for Oklahoma City. Our numbers looked better through April collections, I think, as a percentage of, you know, collecting what we budgeted compared to Oklahoma City's. So I think they're going to take a bigger impact. That is a valid question. And I think as Chairman Thompson continues to monitor loan criteria through payroll protection and what entities are eligible to apply, we are a municipal corporation and we have an IRS designation. And I don't know what number it is, and I don't know if Catherine or Anthony knows off the top of their heads. We're not a 501(c)(3), but we are an IRS code label like that. And I think it is valid for us to continue to monitor. And in the event that the COVID-19 pandemic were to result in those types of staffing impacts, that if, if we are eligible to apply, we would absolutely bring recommendations to the council on that subject. But thank you. I made that note specifically and we'll be tracking that availability of funds for local government use in the, in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have already said as well in regard to this whole idea. So I appreciate the comments and detailed response. Thanks.
We have Councilmember Scanlon now.
Just thinking about the, the bond issue and the EDA opportunities and so on. I think it's important to know, and we've all alluded to this through the course of this conversation, but there may be some unmet needs after, and assuming we're, we're successful with the EDA. There still may be something that falls through the crack. Now we'll get better definition of that through conversations such as tomorrow. And I think from further deliberations by the EDAC folks locally, I don't want to lose sight of the possible benefit to a bond issue for those things that might fall through the crack. I don't want us to dismiss it out of. I don't want us to dismiss it out of hand without knowing more. And we've talked about what we need to know. I just want to make the point that I think that's important. Thanks.
Thank you, Your Honor. Those questions will be polled on that particular ballot question. So we'll get more criteria and more voter insight on that particular question for you to decide before the second reading.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any other comments right now.
I have a few comments. I agree with, again, all of the comments that we've heard so far about establishing a plan and what it should look like. I do, I'll be honest, have concerns about multiplying the same effect. And, I mean, obviously the money will go to use, but if there's money left in the current plan, and then we're hopefully going to have a third plan, I do have concerns, again, about just kind of doubling efforts on that. But surely, we know some businesses can't get help at the federal level. We know that. And so I do want to be mindful of that. Something that I'd like to throw out there, and this was actually something Councilwoman Hickman had mentioned, what if we invested part of the $5 million we've allotted into an economic kind of development fund that allows the city to invest in properties and whatnot? Because we had discussed that in the past. So this would seem like a good opportunity to, you know, EDAB, I bet, could perform more functions if they had a budget and to help us invest as a community and help diversify away from sales tax. So that, I think, would be intriguing if we wanted to reduce the $5 million, knowing we might get help from the federal government in other aspects. So I'd love to hear everyone's thoughts on that. I think this would be a great time to maybe put some seed money into it.
I will confirm with the EDA tomorrow if that is a funding avenue that we can apply for on that side. And I think it's a valid question for how local bond dollars could be used. And I know some of our bond folks are on the Zoom call with us, and maybe Mr. Francisco can help guide us to the appropriate.
Well, and for example, like what we had, this was a study session a million years ago. It feels like, I also feel like I've aged about a decade in the past couple of weeks. But we talked about, you know, buying some of these vacant lots on Main Street or in other areas and then renting them super low to our entrepreneurs who are trying to get their businesses started. So we're both helping entrepreneurs and filling vacancies. But so that's what we had discussed, Daryl. So you have some reference on that one of what we would do with it. And then EDAB would be the board that could help us kind of vet the projects and whatnot.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, that did generate some raised hands. So Councilmember Holman.
Definitely would need some more details about it, but I would, in theory, like the concept, especially if it could help the city have more tools to help lower-income residents with housing options or local businesses that are struggling to make rent in other commercial spaces. I'm not sure exactly, but it's interesting. I agree. I'd like to know more about the details of it. Thanks.
Councilmember Holman, this particular discussion, I think in one of the upcoming CARES Act bundles of money the federal government's discussing, they talked about an infrastructure package. And we've got on Mr. O'Leary's plate and Mr. Comiskey's plate and Mr. Foster's plate, lists of capital projects for the next five years. So I think, you know, we could spring into action if a bunch of federal money made itself available for infrastructure projects, you know, and how shovel-ready are they, et cetera. The concept of housing as one of those potential needs, we'll make sure that that stays on our radar screen because if infrastructure financing or infrastructure funding becomes available through the federal government through CARES, I think that's a need that we recognize, even addressing the concerns of our homeless population is, we've got, we don't have enough available units that we have any, you know, sort of influence over in terms of what the rents are. And this could be an opportunity to solve some of that need too. So every one of those topics, I think, is valid for us to keep on our radar screen. And should the opportunity present itself, we'll be prepared to jump on it.
Yes, if economic development funds could be used for things like purchasing an old apartment complex, for example, that might otherwise be demolished, maybe that gets preserved. Those funds can be used to preserve it for lower-income housing, things like that. So, and same thing with commercial buildings and businesses, small businesses struggling to make rent or keep rent, especially in this, as they're trying to gain their customers back. So anyway, I definitely would like to know more about those concepts. So thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes, I'd like to also learn more and pursue that train of thought, as commented on by Mayor Clark. Affordable housing is a big need in Norman even before we struggled with the pandemic. The magic number is 9,000 units is what we need for affordable housing. So if we can check that box off in this process, that would be great. Then I was trying to remember what municipality it was, and it's Golden, Colorado, FYI, that has their ranking system of how they screened their initial applications for their business recovery package. So that's just one example of the kind of ranking and points that they were using.
Thank you. We will put our hands on that criteria first thing in the morning.
The mayor of Golden, Colorado is actually in my Women Mayors Network, so I know her quite well. If I can reach out to her.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
And I just wanted to weigh in on that thought process that the mayor was going towards, which I love incubating businesses, we know that. And I really think that that actually helps our community grow overall. So I would like to see that. I don't know how I feel about property ownership with the city, but I would like to see it be an incubation if there's enough funds. I know we want this little tiny $5 million to do everything, but I would like to see incubation happen and new businesses be promoted. So I'm just weighing in on that.
Okay, Mayor, I'm not seeing any other hands.
Okay, so it sounds like we still are wanting to explore adding $5 million for, I think it would be economic recovery, you know, limited towards small businesses, certain things like that. But then we also want to see what's going to come out of the HEROES Act and the EDA and all of that fun stuff before we do. So I think that was the guidance we were looking for today. I do also want to point out, let me pull it up, some dates for the actual tax increase should the election on August 25th be successful. It's my understanding that we would, if it passes on August 25th, we would have cash in hand in November 2020. But the first property tax levy for the authorized GO bonds would be made in the fall of 2021, with payments due December 31st, 2021. So most property payers make their payments into installments with their annual property tax payment finally due in March of the following year of the due date. So for most property taxpayers, the final payment for the first increased tax levy related to the bond passed on August 25th of this year would be due on March 31st of 2022. That's a long ways out. So I know we're all having heartburn on, you know, increasing taxes in any way for anybody right now, which is very normal and good that we're thinking like that. But we have to look at the future and the fact that we won't feel the hit in our pocketbooks as property owners until 2022. I am quite hopeful that we will be back on track by then. And I hope you will consider that in deciding whether or not to move this forward because these projects touch so many pieces of our future in such meaningful ways. Everything, again, from public safety, public transportation, quality of life. And in a way, again, it's its own economic stimulus through the jobs it will create through construction and the businesses that will sell, you know, all of the things to build the things. So I'm excited to move this forward. And if and when we do, we need to make sure in communicating this to voters, the 2022 date. I know that would definitely change my mind as a property owner. So I wanted to make sure you knew all that because I don't know if we had ever asked that question. You know, kind of like how we passed the public transportation in November, but then we didn't feel it until, well, we didn't feel it at all. But, you know, it didn't take effect until later, so I'm glad we dug into that. But I hope that's the guidance that staff needs. I know I feel like as we continue to flesh this out, it probably adds more work. But obviously, we want to do this right, and we know there's a need and we have an opportunity. Councilwoman Bearman, is your hand going up?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I had a question, and then you gave me another question. My first question is, maybe this is for Daryl or Brenda, but can you tell me, how is this going to be structured for final council passage? Is it going to be one resolution of, we're voting on to send everything to the ballot? Or is it going to be broken up? The municipal complex will be its own resolution, the Norman Forward Project's its own resolution, small business.
I think what we previously discussed and has been submitted to council was the Norman Forward Projects would be one ballot question, and the money for the homeless question would be included with that. The municipal projects, which would include the EOC, the municipal complex, and our other facilities on North Base would be a second question. Any economic recovery question would be a third, so they would be three separate questions.
So not on the ballot I'm talking about for final.
On the agenda? It'd be the same way on the agenda. And because you won't find out the final polling numbers probably until after first reading, since that is next Tuesday, what you could do with that information is choose to amend the ordinance on final reading if you want to pull some projects out that didn't poll well or decide not to go forward with it altogether. You could.
So it is going to be one ordinance that we pass?
Yes.
Okay. That is something I would like for us to consider doing them separately. I think if they're going to be on the ballot separately, I think council should vote on them separately. I feel differently about each of these different proposals, and I know other council members do as well. And I think it would be appropriate for us to pass them as a council the same way that people will vote on them at the ballot, which is separately. So just throwing that out there, I wasn't sure, so I'm glad I got that clarification. And my second question is, I think this might be for bond counsel. If you have already sent it, my apologies, I haven't seen it. But would it be possible for someone to send us a summary of kind of that timeline that Mayor Clark discussed of after the August vote, when will people first see the increase in their property taxes on which dates? When does the city start to see money coming through? Just kind of a timeline of those priority dates or deadlines for property tax payments, et cetera. I was not even entirely aware of all of that because, you know, my property tax is paid by my mortgage. So, you know, I look at the little leaflets that they send, but other than that, I don't really have, you know, I don't write the check. So it would be helpful to have that written out so that when I talk to people, I can explain it. And if I don't understand it, I can't explain it.
Yes. I got that information confirmed today from our financial advisory team, and we'll certainly write that up for the full council.
Great, and in very, very short words, so that I can.
I apologize for my long words to the mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm not seeing any other comments, Mayor.
Okay, and I would clarify in terms of the resolutions. I'm fine putting them together at this time, or we can talk more about doing them separately. But we won't have the polling by first reading. So I know that everyone was very interested in the polling, as we should be. So I would hope that we can do it all on first reading, knowing that when the polling comes out between first and second, we can amend for second. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. Are there any other comments or questions regarding item number one before we adjourn into executive session?
Looks like Councilmember Petron has a question.
Councilwoman Petron.
Just so I understood, are you saying that? Because I agree with that it would be good to have them separated out in the same fashion that it would be voted on at the ballots. Ballots. Are you saying, Mayor Clark, that you would want to couple them together for first reading, but separate them out for second reading? And if so, is that a problem procedurally?
Hey, I don't think we can do that. I think it's, I was saying one or the other, and that we can remove language regardless of how we do it. If we find that the Economic Business Recovery Package tanks, we could remove that regardless of what format it's in. So that's all I was clarifying on that one.
Yeah, council will retain all of the flexibility right up into the adoption at second reading, and it can be adopted as amended that evening.
We would most likely just start with three, as requested, three separate ordinances. And I don't think you can, and I think Catherine can probably make more comments on this, but I don't think you can bust it out into three ordinances at second reading. It has to either go forward as three or go forward as one.
I would prefer to go forward as three, to keep the most flexibility that we can.
Okay. Mayor Clark, I think we have our direction.
No other comments? Not seeing any? Okay, all right. Well, with that, I'll say thank you to all of our guests for the study session tonight. And council, please stick on, we do have another item for executive session.
We'll give a few minutes for our other guests to exit the meeting, and then you can vote on your next item.
Do we stay in this actual Zoom?
Yes, we just have to kick off everybody.
And I got to stop the stream, right?